January eighth, 2020, Town Council Budget Meeting to discuss seven items related to the upcoming budget. Would you all please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilor Koenig is not here this evening. He's currently flying back from his family reunion and hopefully he'll be here safely to join us tomorrow night. Before we get started, Eileen, did you want to have any introductory comments or did you just want to get into it?
No, I think we can just kind of get into it.
Okay, perfect.
He asked if we could get into it.
So the first item for tonight is assessing. It's going to be page eighteen in your books. I'm sorry, Councilor Harrington.
I was wondering if you would just indulge me just for one minute.
Go right ahead.
Since this is the first meeting of the Budget Committee, Budget for the town, I became aware most recently in talking to a citizen that they were asking about the budget, which is great, the more the merrier, and she really didn't understand how it worked. So I was wondering, would you just take one minute to introduce to the public how we do this? And this is the first, we are, what, is it four or five evenings? It's all on the website of meetings and it's pre-scheduled what departments we're going to talk about. And we have the budget that's been proposed by the department heads and then reviewed by the town manager. It's brought forward. On those evenings that we have the topics, the budget is presented to us. We're able to ask questions. Noticeions are made until the very end. And I think that was the thing that surprised that person because they weren't able to come to this meeting but might in the future. So anytime, if you're not able to attend, just because we may not ask a question tonight that you think is relevant, we can ask at any time and you can notify any one of us or the town manager if you have specific questions about any of the budgets. Okay? So I just thought it would be worth a minute. And the final date where we will be doing the deliberation is January twenty seventh, barring any snow, I think, right?
Correct.
So the twenty-seventh is when we'll regroup. All of the town department heads come when they're presenting their budget. But that night, all the department heads are here in case there's more questions. So if we get questions we have not asked, we can always follow up with questions that night as well. And that's the night we make a decision. We go through the individual departments, we modify, we propose, we discuss. And by the end of that evening, hopefully, we come to a determination of the final budget.
Sorry, Diane Nancy, it's the twenty-ninth. We're doing Wednesday, Thursday this year, so it's the twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth of January is the last day, okay? So I just wanted to take a minute to explain that because unless you've experienced that in the past, it probably was worth just a couple of minutes. So hopefully that answers questions people may have.
That's a good point, Nancy, and people should know up until the twenty-ninth, they can be sending emails or they could pick up a phone and give any one of their councils a phone call to offer, ask a question or offer a comment.
And there are no silly questions.
Absolutely. Eileen?
What I also wanted to say along that line is that our, the town's process is very thorough. So our budgets are very detailed. There's an awful lot of information on them. There's, and it shows historical information in great detail so that everybody can understand and see what has been spent before, what's going on. It also includes, it includes a column that is, shows what the department head has asked for, what I have recommended. So the council sees not only what has been asked for, but also what I am recommending as well. So that, for instance, if the police chief or the DPW director said, "We need a certain kind of truck and I don't put it in mine," they see that it's been asked for and they have the ability to then say, "What was it about that truck? Do you need that truck?" And, you know, maybe ask me why I took it out. So anybody that has any interest in the budget, I'm very welcome. I'm more than willing to sit down and go through you, with you. This is actually my thirtieth budget that I've done, municipal budget. So I've been through it quite a bit of times, not saying it's perfect by any means, but hopefully it includes all kinds of information that you might want to do in as easy a fashion as you can see it. So anyway, my door is always open if anybody wants to come in and talk about anything or see anything. And I welcome anyone that is interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Did any of my colleagues want to offer any comments before we get going? Okay, hearing none. Page eighteen in your budget book is assessing and I'd like to invite Lauren Martin to come up and talk to us about the budget for assessing. Good evening, Lauren, and welcome. Good to see you. One second, Lauren. Yes, yes, Peter.
It might be helpful if, as the department heads or the representatives come up briefly, introduce themselves and say what they do because folks at home may not have, you know, we know who Lauren is, we know who all the department heads and everything are.
They know who I am.
You don't want to be known.
Exactly. They know who I am. My name's Lauren Martin. I am the assessor for the town of Merrimack. And it's right up to my mouth. Okay. And here tonight to talk to you about our budget and answer any questions you may have. I don't know what else you want me to add to that.
Anything new, any highlights, or is it a?
The budget itself is largely the same. We did have a change in the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds. That has changed as far as how we get our deeds, which is, actually, I made a note to comment to you as well. We recently received an email from the town of Hudson regarding Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds. And they're looking to get some support for legislation so that it would ban the registries from charging the municipalities for deeds, past deeds. So under the new system currently, deeds are provided to us in an online forum where we can download them and print them. But if we need to do any kind of historic research of a deed for any reason and we need to print that deed or plan, we now have to pay for it through this new system. And we've never had to do that before, so that would be something new. And the town of Hudson, I know Paul had forwarded that along. They're just looking for some support from the communities in Hillsborough County for this legislation to ban that charge to municipalities. It should be provided at no cost to the towns.
Is it a House bill or a Senate bill?
I believe it's a House bill.
Do we, do you know the number by any chance, or?
In the pile of. And I can shuffle papers, but I know I don't have that one here. I'm sorry? Oh, all right.
Sorry, it's a Senate bill, Senate Bill four twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
So perhaps something from the town to support that, to help save us all money. It's always been something that the registry has been obligated by statute to provide to the communities. So they are still continuing to do that with current deeds. It's just the historic stuff they're looking to get towns to pay for if they need to look at that. And they don't want towns printing off deeds and giving them to taxpayers. That's the crux of that. So there, if anything needs to be printed historically for a taxpayer, they would have to go to the registry to print that. But there's many circumstances that we in the assessing department and other departments in the town have to print historical deeds off or plans for reference. And to get charged for those is something we have not had to do in the past. So we did put something in the budget. We're hoping that through the legislature that we won't need to. But it is in there. There is an increase for that. Oh, the revale. Yep, so for 2021, we're obligated to do our five-year assessment, review and update of values pursuant to state law. So I know that we've looked to expend that capital reserve monies that we've put in there annually. But I think by and large, the only other thing that I noted was we did, we did put in an increase under office equipment for computers. All the computers in the staff, in the department are ten-plus years old. So we're, we're looking to get some new computers in the office and that was part of the budget.
Peter?
Lauren, yeah, I see that we have the townwide valuation here and it's under the capital reserve purchases of seventy-five thousand. Is that what, when we do a revaluation, is that what it costs to do it?
I have not provided a cost yet to the town. That was, I think, what we had, what we had charged the town last time to do that. It is, it's an all, I don't know, it's an all man on deck kind of situation. So during that update year, we are doing a full field review of the town with two assessors in a car. So it takes about six weeks to get that done in Merrimack. We have to mail notifications of new values to all the taxpayers. We hold informal hearings, take those calls, do field.
Can you speak up a little bit? I'm having a hard time.
Is it, is it the microphone on me?
It doesn't sound like it's coming down.
It sounds like you shut it off.
Maybe I did, when I moved it forward. Thank you, Paul. So it's a, it's a pretty intensive process through that year to get the, the values all updated. We mail out income and expense forms to all the commercial industrial properties to try to properly develop an income approach to value. So it's a pretty burdensome process depending on, depending on the year and the, the change in the real estate market. We did see quite a bit of hearings last time because we were in an appreciating market. We've continued to appreciate since that last update in 2016. So if that continues, I would expect that we would see a lot of people again. You know, so we'll have, it's, it's a pretty burdensome task and it takes a tremendous amount of effort and people to get that done.
How many folks does it take to do this?
I mean, I do most of the analysis myself with another assessor. Through the hearing process, I had probably ten of my staff down here handling hearings and helping the assistant assessor as well go out and do inspections for that process. It requires the measuring and listing of all the sale properties in town. In a good year like that, we're looking at six to eight hundred properties that need to be measured and listed for that and data collected for that as well. So it is a, it's a pretty burdensome process. And depending on where we end up for 2021, I'll be getting something. I was talking with Paul and Eileen about that. So I'll be getting them a contract to review for that shortly so that they'll have an actual number of what's required.
So when I see under eighty-three fifty-nine, other outside services, contract assessor services, is that Avatar as well?
That's my, yes, that's for me to be here as your assessor and handle that responsibility. Yep, dated, whenever that is, whether that's the day-to-day assessing tasks when I'm here, abatement review, although we haven't had any this year. But whatever's required of the position, that assessing oversight.
And I say this sometimes, just so folks at home understand, but I know over this past year especially, we've needed you to come in and help on a number of issues, so.
Solar.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Whatever you need, I'm here.
Barbara?
Hi, Lauren.
Hi, Barbara.
So I had a question about what was going on with the computers in the operating supplies. So there's another charge in there, I'm sorry, it's under office equipment, but there's another charge listed for computers for three hundred dollars. Is, that is under office equipment? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Office equipment's eighty-five oh four.
So are those for software licenses?
I'm not sure where you're looking, Barbara. Under my, my line item for office equipment, the department, we have three thousand dollars in there.
Yeah, and there's another one under maintenance office equipment as well.
That's eighty-three thirty-four. It's listed as workstations.
Paul, do you have any insight what that is? It's been the?
That is if, for instance, a workstation needs to be repaired, we lose a fan, things of that sort. It's just regular office maintenance on the counter. It could be, it could be a monitor if we need to replace a monitor.
Okay.
The computers are actual, physical, the unit, the box.
New purchases.
The new purchases. The workstations are for, for maintenance if there's maintenance needed on them.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry that I didn't have the detail on that.
Anybody else? I have nothing, Lauren. If there's nothing, Peter?
Bill, one more, sorry.
That's a hello, don't apologize.
This actually goes to Eileen. Eileen, in light of our two vacancies, and I'm looking at salaries, do you see that that line increases this year because of, I haven't heard really reasons. I understand, I have heard that people have left to go to other places. And I'm wondering, are we competitive? Do you see us, that those salaries need an increase or something, or is there an issue in that, in that area?
Well, we've talked about this, as you know, we've talked about this over the years about different things, whether or not we wanted to actually hire a full-time assessor rather than having a contract assessor because of the size of our community and, you know, the makeup of the staff and all that kind of thing. And it, this all kind of happened at once, but as you know, we've been discussing the whole concept over time. And I have had come to the conclusion some time ago that the contract assessor model is really what we need to do here. Because in, not to disparage a particular job, but I'm, I'm not sure that a professional assessor needs to be a full-time job. Because if you have other people from a technical perspective that are inputting the data and going out and collecting the data and they have that technical expertise to do all those kinds of things, the assessor then can come in and take that data and analyze it and, you know, make, extrapolate ratios and all those kinds of things, which is more on a two or three times a year kind of thing, like an oversight and, and checking. So I think that it's a very good value that we have for having a contract assessor. So I'm kind of saying a little bit more than you wanted to know. But what I wanted to say is that when something like this happens, obviously, we take the opportunity to review what, what we're doing. Can we reinvent this some way to see if it could be done maybe in a better way? And, and we, we've done that. We like what, the system that we have. The only thing that, so we have hired, I think it was today, one of our other employees applied for the job of, of the, what was the title?
Assessing coordinator.
Assessing coordinator, one of the positions that left. So we have somebody for that that can be trained. The only thing is, what are we going to do as far as the position of the technician? The technician that went out and did, you know, went out and evaluated and enlisted and met with people and went to their homes and things like that. We talked about all the qualities that is needed in that kind of a person who, you know, goes up to somebody's door and wants, knocks on the door and says, "Can I come in?" You want to, you know, you need to have a certain kind of person, which Mike was very good at. He had a very, he was, he was a really good calming presence and he was not intrusive in any way. So the idea was, we, we talked about that position and might it be either a higher position or a lower position or a full-time and a part-time kind of position or those kinds of things. So I don't know the answer to that, but we're, it's that one position that we're looking at that may need extra money or not.
Okay. Just, I guess that, I was curious if we're going to see a variation in those salaries, that's all.
You won't for, you won't for the contract assessor for, you'll see a decrease in the new person for the assessing coordinator. The assistant assessor will be the same. It's only that one that we're not really sure what the best mix is for that position.
All right, thank you.
So, so just to clarify, because you threw out assistant assessor under the budget for eighty-one oh three. The assistant assessor is listed as field personnel. Did you mean the administrative assessor?
Yes.
Okay. So really, the?
It's the field personnel one that I'm, I'm considering.
So along those lines, Eileen, is, since we're in the, in the budget season right now, is it possible that we may be looking at reexamining our relationship with Avatar to have them handle that field personnel piece? And if so, is it possible that inefficiency could be created with that particular line item?
We have discussed that. Again, it's like, it kind of all happened at once and we weren't expecting it today. So we met today and we were talking about it. And Lauren is going to do her best in the interim with her company's resources to try and fill in the gaps where the field assessor is not here anymore and those things need to continue to be done. She, she also has a very difficult time finding someone to do that type of job and to finding assessors. She can tell you herself in her own, in her own business, she hires people to do these kinds of things and it's very difficult to get somebody. So we'll be examining all of our opportunities, including working with Lauren, if that is, if that's viable.
And last question, what is, what's the total funded amount for the position, including benefits altogether? Do you know?
The, the field assessor?
Field assessor, that's correct.
Okay. He'll work on it.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, Lauren, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. I'm always willing to be here, answer your questions. So if, as Eileen said.
Bless you.
Through this process, if taxpayers have questions or the council has further questions, anything that I could provide, I'm happy to come back, answer in an email, do whatever you need.
We appreciate what you do to the community, so thank you.
Thank you. You have a great night.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hope the rest of it goes as quick as that.
I hope so too. Next item is tab twenty-four. It's page one oh nine in your book. It's the town clerk and tax collector. I'd like to invite our town clerk, Diane Trippett, and the assistant town clerk, Brenda Dulong, to the dais.
Dais. Excuse me, Mr. Dais. Yo, hi, sorry. So I have a number that you asked me for.
Please.
But I want to make sure that you understand, because health insurance is very expensive. It looks like a really expensive position, but, so the wages are, what's the wages? The wages are fifty nine, the wages are fifty-eight five, fifty-eight thousand five, but with all the benefits is ninety-four thousand eight sixty-seven, including health insurance.
So that's the total value, ninety-four eight sixty-seven. Okay, thank you. Diane, Brenda, if you could state your name to the viewing audience?
Good evening. Diane Trippett, town clerk, tax collector. And with me tonight is Brenda Dulong, the deputy town clerk, tax collector. Let me just start.
You're absolutely welcome to start with your presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the budget before you this evening is not the budget originally submitted to the town manager. The budget that was submitted from the department included a request to reclassify the current part-time position to full-time due to increasing demands for service, new additional duties that have been placed on the department and basically our inability to keep up with service requests and daily workload. During the two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget cycle, a full-time position within the department was changed to part-time. And over the past twelve years, departmental workload and demands for, for service from the public have increased. The same time in two thousand eight that the position had been reduced to part-time, the state of New Hampshire implemented their statewide motor vehicle registration program. Motor vehicle transactions account for approximately ninety percent of a counter personnel, counter employee's daily workload. And our transaction numbers have steadily increased over, over this time. Since the MAP program was implemented, the state of New Hampshire has also consistently increased the types of transactions that can be conducted at municipalities. There are now very few transactions that we are able, not able to do for the state of New Hampshire in our office. And in essence, I can tell you that most people identify our department as the DMV. Since two thousand eight, our state transactions have increased by over five thousand transactions being processed annually. And again, the department has absorbed all of this through this years with, with the staff cut. It's not only transaction numbers, it sounds like a lot of trans, a, a big number, but with that growth, it's also all of the other duties that come with it. It's the inventory, it's the record-keeping, it's the reconciliation. There's just, just so you know, it, it adds time to the transactions. A lot of our transactions now, because we are connected to the DMV, require constant phone calls with the DMV. There are two hundred and thirty-four cities and towns processing transactions. The DMV only has a limited number of personnel and within some of those cities and towns, you, you have definitely more than two hundred and thirty-four people. So wait times in our ability to get some of our customers through the door quickly are hampered because of what we need to do with the DMV as well. And so that exacerbates the lines and personnel, more personnel could, could simply help some of that. According to the Community Development Department, there are approximately fourteen hundred new residential housing units in the works, which are currently not occupied. As these become occupied, these new residents will also need services. Pretty much every resident in the town of Merrimack does need to do business with our office in one form or another. An average household has three registrations. So we're expecting to see an increase of forty-two hundred registrations annually if.
In quick arithmetic, that's approximately an additional eleven semi-transactional hour over the year. That's being added to your team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I hadn't drilled down to that detail, but I appreciate the info.
You're welcome.
In just the first few months of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year, we have seen an increase of over three hundred vehicle registrations and one hundred voter registrations, mainly from these new housing develop, or specifically just from these new housing developments. A couple of other areas that the department has had difficulty with and are important to point out are our ability to assist customers via telephone or return voicemail calls, record-keeping. And there's always filing, which is important that we keep up with that because there are documents that we have to produce. We need to be able to locate them for the residents. With regard to the phone, the department annually receives the highest call volume of all departments with the exception of the Police Department, which is a twenty-four seven operation. And one thing that I would note is, at a staff meeting, Eileen and I had talked about the phones and systems and she, she did make a comment that her department receives a large volume of calls and her staff is fielding a lot of our calls for us. And that's, you know, we do, I need to get out to the public because it is an area of frustration for a lot of people. We do strive to return all of our calls on the same day, but there lately have been times that it's taken us up to two days to get back to a customer just to get through all of those calls. They're frustrated, they call the town manager's office. Their staff does a wonderful job trying to answer as many calls as they can with the basics, but they have things to do in, in their department as well and workload. And now it's shifting and affecting other departments. There has been a new law change to RSA six fifty-four colon thirteen dash A, retention of voter registration forms, which has, will now place all of the record keeping responsibility of voter registration records with the town clerk's office. This previously was vested solely with the supervisors of the checklist, so this is a a shift in responsibilities from the supervisors to our department. In reviewing their hours with the finance department, it appears that they have averaged about two hundred and seventy-five hours filing, which will add that two hundred and seventy-five hours of time to our department. Again, with our reduced staff and our ever-increas, well, not reduced staff, but ever-increasing other duties as well. During this past year, our record keeping and filing duties have fallen behind, some items up to a week, others several months. I can tell you that I have projects that have sat in boxes in my office for going on two years now. Brenda has several projects, record keeping things that are in boxes in her office because we just haven't been able to get to them, trying to keep up with the demand in in servicing the public. Since two thousand, actually, I lost my my paw. Lost my train of thought, one second, please. Brenda and I have attempted to formulate long-range planning, to set priorities with staff, to try to cross-train staff as much as possible, to have different people become proficient in different areas so that they can assist other staff. But unfortunately, for the last couple of years, we've had a lot of turnover. Since two thousand eighteen, we've we've had six, we've lost six employees, two to resign, two to retirements, and four due to resignations. And so basically, for the last two years, we've been in a a train shorthand, train shorthand, and it's been a cyclical cycle, trying to keep up with with training people. So we have one person on our counter currently who is a ten-year employee, and she's very adept at what she does. But we have other job duties that we're trying to get people up to speed on, and then they leave. And then we start the cycle all over again. So that's had some some problematic issues as as well, so I just wanted to point that out. We want to be proactive as much as we can, we try to be proactive as much as we can, but we just keep finding that we're reactive because of our increasing workload and our our staff turnover. So definitely, we recognize that reclassifying this position does add money to the budget. We don't take lightly requests to increase our budget, and we do understand that you, the council, and the town manager strive to be very prudent and careful with every tax dollar that's raised or needs to be raised. However, as I mentioned, almost every resident does need to do business with the town clerk's office, and we are hoping and possibly pleading for some relief and hoping that you'll consider adding that back into the budget. Other than that, our budget really didn't have any significant changes, and the one that the town manager presented to you is pretty much just a flat level funded budget.
Diane, thank you. So you're, the budget, as I read it here, is that new position already reflected in wages clerical? Or have you not added that in yet at this time?
So the the-
Eileen.
Position was added and Paul did a, oh, I'm sorry.
What you'll see in several of the different budgets, which you'll see in this one in particular, it's actually under, it's on, do you have page numbers, one hundred and twelve, page one hundred and twelve, under, right beneath unemployment compensation eight one three six is a number that says in the department column, part-time to full-time account clerk, forty-five thousand three one eight. That's where the request is. So I asked the same question of Paul, why isn't, why are our numbers still the same? And she's, it's it's placed over here, so if you wanted to add it back,
Okay.
It's it's clearly spelled out.
I just, I don't have the page, what, are you on the-
One twelve, page one twelve.
Well, he's on the computer.
A tab tw-
It's underneath unemployment compensation, then there's, in between that and office supplies, there's a line that says full-time to part-time clerk.
Thank you.
See it?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, so-
I'm sorry. But what it is basically is, that is the additional amount in salary and benefits to to change a part-time person to a full-time person. So it's all kind of lumped into one spot, in case you wanted to do something with it, that we wouldn't have to go digging through pieces and parts to-
All right, so as I look at wages part-time, the two, the account clerk two positions, then one of those would be eliminated, is that what I'm understanding? Okay.
Or change to full-time?
Because it just, it kind of throws you off with that other number there. So so one of those part-time positions- I'm sorry?
Eileen was asking where it was, and I was giving her the number.
So that, so one of those two positions would be eliminated then, under that column?
No, it's it's actually under eight one oh seven.
Okay, yeah.
You've seen that, part-time wages, so there's a there's a position here, twelve hundred and forty-eight hours, sixteen sixty-five an hour, twenty thousand seven seventy-nine, so no, it would not be eliminated, this is in addition to.
Okay, so then, all right, so now we're looking at, we've got one, two, three, four, five, account clerk two, the two part-timers.
Actually, just one, Peter.
Okay, one, one part-timer, so we'd actually go to six account clerk twos, is that what I'm looking at?
No, so what would happen is that, the wages that you're seeing in the part-time position, that twenty thousand seven seventy-nine, that plus the part-time to full-time number that Paul has broken out on the other page, would transition to the full-time account clerk two.
So that would be the fifth position.
Wages.
So that would be the fifth position.
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you.
So it's twenty thousand seven seventy-nine, plus forty-three, forty-five three one eight, would include salaries and benefits for a full-time person.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I just want to comment on this real fast, I I support this, Diane and Brenda. I was in there the other day, and people are coming and going, and I know you have, I think, how many in training, two or three in training?
We currently have, we have three, we have four full-time counter personnel and one part-time currently. So just for purposes, say we have five, four out of our five have a year, a little over a year or less experience. So we have three currently in heavy training, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, the workload's only increasing as the town grows, so I I I personally am in favor of that that position, so.
Just to clarify, we're moving from, you'd be moving from a part-time to a full-time, so you'd have, you take, you have four full-time employees. If if it gets put into the budget, you'd go to five, correct?
Correct.
So we would be eliminating a part-time position as a consequence?
Correct.
Am I, okay, so, okay. Nancy, or I'm sorry, Finley, I apologize.
Thanks, Bill. Diane, one of these sheets that you had emailed to us yesterday shows the property tax rate, and you have it at twenty twenty at two ninety-nine, and instead of, it's tight, quite tiny print, but I was just, I didn't know, that appears to be missing something, so I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry, Finley, I'm not following you, that I emailed you yesterday?
Yes, it came with the-
Oh, that might be the phone call summary, I think.
Nope, this is speaking about the tax rate, it shows the two nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the two nineteen tax rate, and then it shows the twenty twenty at two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Goes from four seventy-one to two ninety-nine, so I don't know.
I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with with, I'm sorry, can I, could I look at that, or?
I thought it came, I, off of your, it's not important, I can find out and then follow up with you.
Okay, because I don't recall sending you something about a tax rate, so that's why I'm confused, I apologize.
All right. Yeah, I can, let me, I'll do it later, though, we'll just keep on going right now, thank you, though.
Are you, not to be, are you done with your presentation, or was there more that you wanted to?
No, that was, that's about it.
That's the gist of it, okay.
Yes, because without, I guess, without discussing this position, the budget that was submitted to you from the town manager is pretty, it's pretty straightforward and level-funded as we have submitted in in prior years. So unless you had questions specifically on some of the minor changes that are in those line items, I'm happy, or I'm just happy to answer those.
Again, I did quick, quick arithmetic while I was sitting here, so moving, you're moving a part-time account clerk two, at twenty-four hours a week they work, correct?
Twenty-eight.
It's twenty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-four, yes.
Twenty-four, okay.
Correct, twenty-four.
So we're we're adding an additional sixteen hours to the position, which comes out to an additional eight hundred and thirty-two hours. Based on the eighty eighty transactions a week, which comes out to a little bit more than eleven eleven transactions a week, is that going to be enough? I mean, are you going to have enough, I mean, and mind you, it's an estimate, in your professional opinion, is that, you know, moving an individual from part-time to full-time, is that going to adequately keep the clerk's office staff to address the growth that's going on in our community?
I I wish I had a crystal ball and could say that we could absorb that, I would love more staff, just only because of the turnover that we've seen, I think having some continuity would be nice, but you, we, you know, there's only so much tax money to go around, and I don't want to ask for, come forward with a budget to you, asking for more more than half a person. I'm trying to at least get something, to be perfectly honest with you. We're hoping to start with that, you know, with that, and we believe that if if we can retain our staff, they're going to become more proficient. And over time, some of these problems will, I don't want to say problems, but the length of time that it takes a transaction to be done will shorten, and you get faster and you get more proficient, and some of those things could work, some of those wrinkles can work their way out, too.
Right, it's the proficiency that we're, that the clerks have to get up to date, because I would think we've all gone to the clerk's office, and there's a lot of different nuances in working and working with the state to make sure people's registrations go through, voting, I mean, there's all sorts of specific rules that that you folks need to follow, so that you're all you're all compliant. I guess I'm looking at it from a from a personnel management perspective, having five full-time employees, and we're coming into the first of the nation, you know, an additional forty-two hundred transactions coming before the clerk's office, five people, vacations, sick days, all, I mean, it is a lot for both of you to manage, and I guess I I would like to have some sense, you can't give me the assurance that I get that, but I just, that that you feel that right now, with the change from part-time to full-time, that your situation's manageable to accommodate people that are that are coming to town hall looking to to transact with the clerk's office?
Well, I'm glad you did point out or mention the primary, because one of the things that we did put in the budget under those part-time wages is, we do have some money budgeted for an on-call person to come in and help and assist periodically with tax time and filing. But for the presidential election, we did add monies to the budget for temporary help for someone to come in and help us with that November presidential election. With regard to vacations, for a while, Brenda and I used to look at the ca, look at the calendar, and I some of you who have been here for a while will know that I've come to you before and have said, you know, with our staff that has longevity, we we were shorthanded for six months out of the year because of that longevity. With new staff, there's not going to be longevity for some time to come where they're going to have the three and four and five weeks of vacation. So it's 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 a, it's a, it's a tough thing to predict.
Okay, I appreciate that. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Actually, it's not really important, I just, I appreciate, you know, treading slowly into the waters of staffing, because you know, we're at the beginning of the budget process right now, and and the town is growing, and and somewhat quickly, it seems to me. And so, you know, to start out with loading up staff at one level, we we have a long ways to go, and I I I wanted to let you know I appreciate the thoughtfulness of that, because it is important, and we, and I recognize I see you as a customer service business, even though-
Exactly.
People can't go anyplace else, they have to see you, but I appreciate-
Exactly.
The desire to try and keep it as a pleasant experience as possible. So thank you, Diane.
Barbara.
Diane, have you been able to identify the root cause of the turnover, or is it just attrition?
Well, we have been looking at that. I I have some theories, I have spoken with Paul and Sharon, and I'd like to sit down and see if we can develop some type of plan for going forward. One of the things that we are seeing, I my my thought process on it, number one, is it's 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 two jobs, and there's a lot of responsibility for two jobs. They have to learn a town clerk job, and they have to learn a tax collector job. We are one of the few large communities left that has a combined position with our employees having to learn two jobs. We are also, we have been, and the town manager and this council has been very good about reviewing salaries and wages, and we have been working on them steadily over the last few years. However, we're finding we are lagging behind. I know that we are seeing job ads where the pay is starting in the eighteen to twenty-two dollar range, and we start about sixteen or sixteen fifty. Other departments, we are, we do lose staff to other departments, we are the foot-in-the-door training ground, and we find that other departments offer higher wages, so when there's a job posting, our employees and, you know, do apply for them. They have families and budgets, and, you know, they have to take care of themselves. And we do see that we are seeing wages in other municipalities. And the ones that we're seeing in the other municipalities are for one position. So they're going to, for instance, we had an employee who left a few years ago who went to Bedford, it was four dollars an hour more. It was one, one position, not a combined position. And we've been seeing job ads coming out, we're seeing them, and not to get into outside of the clerical, but we're seeing them for deputy and for town clerks and tax collectors, and a lot of them are one position, and our wages are are below.
Peter, and then Finley.
Yep, sorry, Diane, I'd love to see a breakout, maybe a comparison-
Sure.
From maybe five or six communities the same size as Merrimack, as to what their clerk's office does and how they do it in salaries.
Yep.
That'd be great, it'd be educational for us going forward, so.
I have quite a bit of that, I have the job ads, I'm happy to send them along.
Very quickly, Finley, I just want to dovetail off of Peter, but it probably would be helpful if you can identify the communities where the positions, where the positions do fold, it's the tax collector, town clerk position, and what those salaries are for those individuals' communities that are doing those jobs, that would, I think would be valuable, so, Finley?
I don't, I don't mind looking into that, if that's, in fact, I don't mind looking into it at all. But it would really be more beneficial if, in fact, we're losing people because of the salary component. I I know of a few that have left, two of them, I believe, were retirement, that wasn't a salary problem, and another one I, it was not for salary reasons that they left, I know those, so I don't, I don't know how it all falls in, and I'm not opposed to looking at it because I'd like to be competitive, but I- but I don't want to be chasing all the time other communities.
I agree, I agree.
Because it's not always necessary.
I agree. Long?
Thank you, Diane and Brenda. I just want to express that over a number of years, having been a consumer, and as Pete said, at the counter at the town clerk's office, I have a lot of confidence in what you're presenting to us tonight, and in terms of managing that. I've never, I've been concerned about delay or the time that might have been consumed, and I have to tell you, in my experience in the last four or five years, the only time a clerk or Diane or Brenda or anyone at that office has taken a moment, has been to do what you were, or somebody was suggesting about making sure they were on the right page with the state computer or whatever it takes. So my commendation's not a signal of what's going to happen with the budget, but I'm not trying to manage your office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nancy?
Just one, one quick, one quick statement, which is going to affect a lot of the budgets. We have a really good economy right now, so no matter what positions we're talking about, we're competing with the private sector.
Correct.
So that puts us in a behind-the-scenes kind of difficulty now, anyway, because these are not supposed to compete with private sector jobs, and that's the difficulty we have as municipalities. And, but it also works the other ways. When the economy goes down, we're stable, so. We just have to keep that in mind, too, as we think about it in the future, and we're just the first, you're the first ones, so there'll be others.
Statewide, it's two-point-four percent unemployment, so that's...
Which is basically zero.
Zero, and it's difficult, I agree.
It's great to be a worker, though. I mean, God bless, that's great, but it just creates a situation for us. So, that's one.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else? Diane, Brenda, thank you so much. Thank, thank the women in the office for the work that they do day in and day out, and I, I, whenever I go to Town Hall, I make it a point to, to wave and say hi to them, because I know how, and they do a great job, and they do it with a smile, but I know that, you know, there are good days and there are challenging days, so we, we appreciate the work that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next on our agenda is media. It's going to be tab thirty-two, which is going to be page one-twenty-one in your book. I'd like to invite Justin, I don't even know your last name, I'm embarrassed.
It's Slez.
Slez, that's what I thought, okay. Justin Slez and the director, Mr., Mr. Nicholas Levalle, fresh off of the Haha Club, but...
Let's not go there.
Okay, fair enough. You just introduce yourself to the viewing public, that'd be great, I appreciate it. Thank you, and welcome.
Thanks for having us. I'm Nicholas Levalle, the Town of Merrimack's Media Services Coordinator. I oversee the operation of the town's media division, which includes our Town Hall TV studio, two conference rooms, and our three cable TV channels. We're funded by way of Comcast cable subscribers here in Merrimack. A percentage of their, their bill goes back to the town. And we're a staff of two and a half employees, a part-time employee, two full-time employees, one of which is next to me, Mr. Justin Slez, our media, Assistant Media Services Coordinator. The bulk of our budget, the first portion, is largely the same as last year. There really isn't a whole lot of changes until you get to the, to the lower portion of the, of the budget sheet in front of you, which is our equipment line. And I could talk about some of the equipment that we're proposing to purchase. There's, there's two major items, one of which is our remote equipment. What we're looking to do is replace gear that is, in some cases, up to ten years old, some of it's six years old. It's older, it's bulky, it requires at least two people to set up, and what we'd like to do is, we'd like to continue offering these, coverage of board and committee meetings or outside, off-site events, like the deliberative sessions and school budget committee, and also other special events that happen throughout the year, especially the past couple of years with the NHDES and the Water PFOA meetings. That's what we use this equipment for, and also graduation and different community events. And one of our initiatives, especially this past year, is covering more community events and more staff-produced content that highlight not only what the community is doing, but also keeping residents informed on what board and committee meetings are doing. So that's largely what this gear is used for, and as I, as I mentioned earlier, this equipment is, in many cases, older, bulkier. What we'd like to do is purchase equipment that can take, the setup can only be one person. And using equipment that we purchased last year and we've been using, we, we, we could cover meetings, multi-camera, with less staff, and offer these meetings live, not only on one of our channels, but also through our social media pages as well. So that, that's the remote equipment line. The other line in equipment, the bigger project, is equipment for our Town Hall Memorial Room, and Justin's going to speak a bit about that.
Yeah, so we did some upgrades quite a few years ago to the Memorial Room. Some of that stuff is aging out, especially the sound equipment in there definitely needs a re-up. I think it's older than, since I started here, anyway. We're looking mostly to try to, I don't say it's like messy or anything over there, but kind of clean things up a little bit. We want to try and run some wires just under the floor, maybe. We've been discussing that. And we have a projector that takes up a lot of space in there. We'd probably like to do something like this over there, if possible, where it just drops down from the ceiling, projector mounted to the ceiling instead of on a table in the middle there. Right now, we just have, our sound in the back is just knobs, which I, I don't know if anyone's really technical as far as sound stuff goes, but I think a soundboard back there would do us a lot of good. And we'd also like to be able to hopefully stream, stream some of those meetings live from over there, and we need to upgrade equipment to be able to do that as well.
What we'd like to do with that smaller room is match the same sort of service that residents have expected to see from coverage in this room, match that in the room next door.
Peter?
Bill, I just, thanks. In regards to the, the room, they're discussing the Memorial Room, I, I can't agree with you more. When we do the Conservation Commission meetings there, we have folks coming in, doing presentations. You know, some of it branches off from the planning board, that they have to come before us ahead of time, and they're literally, the citizens have to look at the camera zoomed in on poster boards, or we put it up on the slide screen, as opposed to what we do here, where people at home can see, you know, a PowerPoint presentation. They should be able to. They shouldn't have to struggle to see what's being discussed. So I, I agree. That room needs it. It needs everything you guys have described, so I, I'm in support of it, obviously, so.
I'm sorry, Nancy?
I just want to make a point again, just for the general public. The money that we're discussing is not money raised by taxes. This department is not self-funding, but the franchise fees, as you mentioned, is from the, the cable company. So when we're talking about funding for this, we're the luxury at the moment of not saying we have to raise tax money to pay for it. In fact, the town gets money that we take from you to help decrease the tax rate, right, the tax rate. So just, just for the general public.
Right, but not before we provide all of these wonderful services to the town, yeah, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
You know, my only comment, Nick, is I, I do agree with Peter. The, the, we've come, we've come a long way in making that room a little bit better to be able to provide a, a good facility for, for our volunteer groups, the Concom, specifically Heritage Economic Development, you know, when it was active, we would meet there as well, so. I know a lot of other civic groups have used that particular room. The Girl Scouts kind of comes to mind, the, the Community Action Council with, with San Cobain has started using that particular room. So I think they present a unique opportunity, that if we're able to upgrade, upgrade those particular media components in there, we can, you know, people can, can now tune in at whatever hour of the morning and actually find it on, on Local, Local Access Three or Local Access Four, and it'll be there. And it's stuff that we can put out on our YouTube channel as well. So I, I agree with Peter. I think it's, I think it's a necessary upgrade to, to that particular facility. So I appreciate you, you and Justin having the, the idea to pursue that. And the remote piece as well, that I, I remember from, from PFOA days, you guys lugging that stuff around, so. You know, if we can make things a little bit lighter for you. Did you have something, Eileen, or, okay?
We also know that the, the funding we're getting from cable is good for what, another ten years?
Another ten years, that's correct. Anybody else? Finley?
As long as there's cable.
Correct.
As long as people are buying cable TV.
The amount?
Yeah.
And, and that's one of the reasons why we're also taking these initiatives to offer more of our content online and on our YouTube channel and elsewhere. Actually, we're, tonight, we're actually streaming on Facebook, and we streamed our Plenty More meeting last night on Facebook as well, at the request of a resident.
Good.
So.
I still want you to Photoshop this.
If you could get rid of the HD for me.
Well, we, we lost our beautician, Chris Perez, to a, a full-time job elsewhere, and I just don't want to put Colin through that torture. I'd like to keep Colin around for a while.
I, I guess the one question that I would ask you, because of the way our, our lives have become, for the lack of a better term, digitized, where do you think the future is, is, is going as it relates to our media department? Have you and Justin, you know, philosophically had a conversation? I mean, outside of the, the hardware, the, the actual infrastructure that, that we need, is there anything that you, we might be seeing, the town council might be seeing, maybe not next year, but at some point down the road?
Aside from hologram town council.
Correct. And I, I want to come back as, as the doctor from Voyager, so.
Justin and I have a lot of discussions every week about what is it that this media division is going, what can we become? Because the industry has changed so much, especially in the past three to five years, let alone fifteen, since I've been here. I really do think that this division and what we offer will have more to do with social media and content that you find on the web, for sure. I think cable TV will be a part of it for quite a while, but I think that people at home are looking, looking, not just looking to find this content online, or on our channels, but definitely online. And the, the past few weeks, for whatever reason, I've had a few residents call or email, and they say, "Well, I'm not a cable subscriber, but I was watching the meeting online." Or, "Can you have these meetings streamed live on, on YouTube instead? Because I have that ability on, you know, their smart TV to, to watch it live via YouTube." And, and we're going to be doing that. We're, I mean, we're doing that now. We're trying it out with the, with the Facebook livestream, but that's where I see a lot of this going, is less emphasis on the cable TV portion and more emphasis on offering our content on the internet and via social media sites.
Barbara?
Do you guys see a future in interactive meetings? In other words, while you're streaming, you know, a resident would be able to actually post a question real-time during that phase of the meeting?
I mean, I could pull out my phone right now and log into Facebook and see if anyone is commenting on this.
No, please don't.
I'd be afraid, like Counselor Harrington, I think I'd be afraid to, this moment. But, I mean, people are, in a way, interacting as it is with meetings that have already been posted. But real, but real-time, I mean, that's, that's a possibility. But who would be the staff or the elected official to monitor those comments and bring them up during the discussion? That I, that I wouldn't know, but it's, it's definitely a possibility, and it's definitely kind of what our society is becoming, where just anyone can kind of chime in on a live meeting.
Right. Anybody else? Oh, look at that, Finley. Okay, I guess that, Nick, Justin, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
And thanks for answering our questions, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Have a good night. Next item is tab number three, which is going to be page twenty-three, and it's Fire Department and Emergency Management, and I'd like to invite the Fire Chief, Mike Curia, and the Assistant Chief, Matt Duke, to make their presentation or get set up to make a presentation. Eileen, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just, I'd like to talk about a few things that, that I am learning and that we're working on relative to the Fire Department and the staff and that kind of thing. And so, as you know, for probably the past three years, we have been talking, not specifically about the Fire Department, but about all departments as it relates to the new apartments and the new businesses and, not businesses, but new residential, basically residential units for some time. And I actually, I had Tim Thompson give me an update on this. So when, whenever we talk about these, these properties, we will be using these same numbers, because they're, they're kind of up to date with what's coming. I broke them down between rental versus, versus condos, for instance, that you might buy. And so there's, there's a number of residential units. So in light of that, as you know, we've been discussing it for some time as a concept, that the town is going to have to start beefing up their staffing. We have done so in some of the departments. I believe it was last year, we changed a part-time person from, in the tax collector's office, from part-time to full-time. We have added a couple of police officers and that kind of thing. I have some, as you know, also, I have added positions, had to do it from the perspective of priorities because we can't fund everything in one year. So I have added staffing positions in various different departments. Now, during the course of our discussions and also in my budget presentation, I had indicated to you that I would be looking into hiring for firefighters, and I was, for all intents and purposes, assured that we would be getting a grant. We can assure that somebody can get a grant, but there's these grants available, and London Dairy got one, and, you know, London Dairy's very similar to us in terms of, you know, makeup of, you know, what you might call wealth, or, you know, those kinds of things. So, so anyway, I was going under that impression. So during the budget process, I had spoken to you individually and by email and said to you, and I even said it during the budget presentation to an extent, that there was going to be, I was very for firefighters, but it had never been presented to me that I felt comfortable presenting it to you, and so, for instance. When you add four people, if you have a person on a ship, we're talking about a half a million dollars. An annual, half a million dollars. We have to look at annual things, not what's happening on a day or on a, you know, individual day when you've got five... day when we got five, uh, we got three mutual aid calls from Bedford. Um, well, if you looked at it over the course of two years, you know, like fifty during the whole year, that we're getting back for the whole year. So, looking at it, building a life isn't you know, the be-all and un-end-all. So, as you know, when I propose something of that magnitude, I need to be clearly convinced so that you have all of the information before I make any decisions about. So, during the budget process, I also told you about the grant, the idea of, um, hiring for firefighters through that grant. I also told you that I had put some more money into, um, into overtime to staff to nine people, which you understand, I don't know if everybody understands that, but, um, so we wouldn't go below nine people, um, with the understanding that that might be our match. Now, because, um, I have to now say this out loud, we could not put it in the budget because the grant is a non-supplanting grant, which means you cannot, um, be planning to pay for it already and then, um, and then ask them for the money. So, you can't say, "We have enough money to pay for this," but while at the same time you're saying, "But we need a, we, we have the need for a grant." So, we were, you know, kind of like, uh, being very delicate about, about that, um, discussion. Um, and now I, I say it out loud. So, whatever that means in terms of the grant, I don't know. Um, so, um, so, we ha- so we have that situation. Um, and this is the first time since the last four firefighters were added that I've ever been asked for any other firefighters. Very conceptual. I de- I did not have any information until I got it yesterday and it's absolutely, the information is entirely insufficient to convince anyone. Don't. I believe that we do. Um, but I don't have the factual basis with which to bring it to you to convince you. So, I'd like you, I'd like you to, um, take a look at those charts over there because I, I, this is what is the indicator to me that we need staffing.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Hold on a sec. I, I'll recognize you first, Peter, but Eileen's talking.
No, I know, but I guess...
Go ahead. I recognize, Peter, you're recognized.
You made a case that there's insufficient facts and if we're gonna talk about this, why don't we delay the presentation on the Fire Department budget till the sufficient facts are provided so we can have that? I mean, you know, I'm not trying to give anybody a hard time here, but...
I agree, I agree.
We're, we're talking about something and it sounds like it's an interest in the Fire Department and the facts aren't there and we're having a presentation, an incomplete presentation.
Yep. And again, but, all, all that I wanted to say though, is that the indic- there are indicators from these, um, detailed reports that we have, that there are times, um, during a particular month where, um, we're stretched very thin. So, those are indicators to me when I look at it from the overview. But when I look at things like mutual aid, you know, is mutual aid given and taken now out of balance? It isn't. But maybe, maybe five. He gives sixty-five, something like that. Kinds of things that before were... That we needed more staff. And I don't have that information now. Um, but I like Peter's idea. I think it's a good idea. A different time when I have the sufficient information and can make a, um, adequate and, um, and factual and informed, um, presentation to you about what's needed.
I just, if, this is important, so...
If I, if I could, I had asked Eileen and Paul for some information and I know that they had some challenges getting that information to me. As a matter of fact, Paul spoke brief with me before the meeting tonight, saying that there was, they had not finished answering the questions that I had presented them ahead of time. So, I agree with you. Um, I think, as we alluded to earlier, or in, in our conversation, you know, we are a growing community. We've got some challenges, you know, coming, coming up and down the DW Highway over the next couple of years that, that we're gonna need to think about how we wanna handle those challenges strategically. And I know in my conversations with, with the chief, you know, we are, you know, seventy percent of the time, it's either basic life support or advanced life support. You know, that's what our, our first responders have been doing in the, in this community over the last couple of years. So, um, when looking at the chart that Eileen presented to us from, from Eileen, you know, looking at an additional, you know, thirteen hundred and seventy-nine additional individual residential... Units. Units that are being proposed for this community, I wanna make sure that we have enough people being able out there on the road that when the call comes, that they've got, they've got the adequate personnel to get, to go, to go from one end of the town to the other or vice versa, to attack that problem. You know, I don't, I, I sheepishly, you know, one of the questions that I'm not gonna get my answer tonight, but was, you know, what's the increase in mutual aid? And I think it's, it's gonna be interesting to see what that mutual aid number is, 'cause I don't think we should be relying on other communities to...
Phil, she just told you the answer, though.
I understand that.
It isn't very much different. It's, we're not adding...
But I wanna look in the gra- I wanna look at in the grand scheme of things, of how we're gonna get there, is what I'm talking about.
Right. But what I'm, what I need to say to you, though...
Sure.
Is that you need to have not emotional, but factual information that, from a business decision, et cetera, that you can make to anybody with a straight face, that this is needed. And I do not have in my hands that information, um, because I haven't been provided it. So, until I have that, I, I would, would not make recommendations to you. So...
Nancy?
What's the status on the grant?
Well, I guess we'll hear about that now.
I mean, we could talk about everything except the positions tonight, right? We could talk about equipment. Do you wanna do the whole thing?
I'd rather have them do, that's my preference, is have them come back and do the whole thing.
Do the whole thing.
In its entirety and, and the fact that...
Okay, can they answer the part about the grant?
Well, that's important because I'm disappointed...
'Cause that has an impact.
That we had to even have that conversation tonight. But that conversation was forced because apparently there was a communication problem going on, um, that the Facebook page that I just recently learned is where all this information's coming from, was just lopsided, one-sided, and I'm really a little shocked that people would base all of their desires off of a Facebook page.
Unfortunately, that's reality nowadays.
So, so now we have to put this out on the table and I'm concerned, I don't know why we can't get the grant, 'cause I've, I've seen on that form that we can't get it because we're too wealthy a community. But if London Dairy got, you know, got the grant, I don't buy that. So, I'm interested in the grant, but as far as everything else, I as well need the, uh, analysis of all the data that we're getting ahead by the time we make that decision.
Could, could you update us on the grant? Is that okay for him to answer the grant?
What's the pla-?
Is there any reason why we should not hear about the grant?
Are you prepared to ask about the grant?
Yes.
Do you actually have?
I, yes.
I just don't wanna jeopardize the grant, conditions of the grant. I'll put you in an undue, unfair position. That's what I'm asking.
What's the pleasure of the co- I mean, my preference would be to wait for...
I wanna hear about the grant.
I do as well.
Everything else can wait.
I guess that my question is, uh, gentlemen, when is the grant due? When do you have to have it filed?
You'll have all that information.
Go ahead.
It's not a long presentation.
Okay. Okay, then, let's, let's...
If it pleases the council, I will do it now. If you get tired of hearing it, I'll stop. It's totally at your...
So, Chief, Assistant Chief, if we could learn about the grant, that would be great. Paul? Sure. We're gonna take a council five-minute recess for technical setup.
Well, that's why, what is the reality? That's, that's why I wanna hear it. I don't wanna hear what the, I don't wanna hear what the web says, I wanna hear what...
Thank you, Chief.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
So, I'm sure for hours.
Yeah.
With this, this much.
Which is what is, is where we, where, where that's probably. Where the staff is going down, it's on the... That'd be usually different. But that'd be...
That's why I said I couldn't eat that.
What about this?
And...
So, one of our chairs. And that's when you...
But I don't, I don't get...
Gotta have the back of the...
How are we doing, Justin? There she goes.
I don't have all the... I can show you. I appreciate that.
That is like so freaking terrible, I can't believe that.
Yeah, but still, 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 but still. And that's why people, man or not, be...
Huh?
This is a, I haven't done that yet, I'm telling manager.
Of course. Yeah. Sorry. Let's kill it. I'm tired.
Yeah.
But for years, we've now... Yeah, I meant myself, this is... I saw that this, you know, you know, like, like, what, you know, what, you know, the south, the parts out there.
Justin?
You, Justin.
Justin? The lights, you get the lights? Please, thank you. Perfect, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're, we're back. And I want to welcome Fire Chief Mike Currier and Assistant Chief, Fire Chief Matt Duke, to give us a discussion about the grant, the 2019 FEMA Safer Grant, so. Chief Currier, welcome, if you can introduce yourself to the viewing audience, that'd be great, appreciate it.
I'm Mike Currier, the Fire Chief of Town Merrimack. Matt's Assistant Chief of Operations, and he's going to give you the presentation on the FEMA Safer Grant.
Thank you, welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Members of the council, members of the public, thank you. As the Mr. Chairman and the Chief alluded to, this presentation is on the 2019 FEMA Safer Grant, and just, it's kind of an overview of, of the grant, the process, and kind of the ins and outs. These are the things we'll be covering tonight, the FEMA Safer Grant. What is it, the purposes and the objectives of the grant, the, the scoring, if you will, of the grant, how, how the awards are determined, funding, the town portion of the cost, because it is a, a matching sort of grant, and then the timeline, as we understand it at this point, and then we'll certainly take any questions, and we'll do our best to answer them at the end. So what is it, first of all? It's through FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The, the Safer Grant is, stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. Basically, what that means is, it is a, a federal grant provided to municipalities to increase their staffing level to meet, to meet the growing needs of communities across the country. The purposes and objectives of the grant, and this is right from the, the Notice of Funding Opportunity from FEMA, this is, this is what FEMA says the grant is for. The purpose of the grant is to provide funding directly to fire departments to, to assist in increasing staffing, to help meet industry minimum standards, and to provide adequate fire and emergency medical services protection. The objectives are to assist with improving staffing and deployment capabilities, so fire departments can safely and effectively respond to emergencies. And one of the other items in their objectives is, it's not required, but preferred, that Safer Grant recipients attempt to enhance their staffing to help meet the recommendations of NFPA 1710 in an effort to help achieve safer and more effective responses. And what NFPA 1710 is, is a national consensus standard, it's not a requirement, it's not a code, but it's a national consensus standard, considered an industry best practice, and it covers, it's called the deployment standard. It covers how fire and EMS departments in America deploy their personnel and how they operate. So, how do we go about getting it? There's obviously an application process, we'll get to that in timelines. There's an application process, you submit your application through FEMA, and it's, it's reviewed and select, scored or selected through two means. There's pre-scoring, which is based on what they call program funding priorities, and we'll touch on those a little bit later. That's 50% of the scoring process, and then there's the, the independent peer review, made up of at least three, three reviewers. The reviewers come from fire service professionals, representatives from, from nationally recognized organizations. The peer review bases their evaluation on four criteria, which again, I'll touch on in a couple minutes, and that accounts for the other 50% of the scoring. So the first portion of the scoring that I alluded to is the pre-scoring, that was 50% of the score. It's based on what are known as program funding priorities, and as it's noted on the slide, those, those change and are determined annually by a separate board. It's not determined by FEMA, it's, it's determined by another industry panel that determines what sort of, what sort of things are most important to them in the, in the fire and emergency services industry this year. The 2018 priorities included work, communities working towards NFPA 1710 compliance, again, communities who are currently, currently conducting NFPA 1582 health and wellness physicals for their both, for their pre-employment screening and their annual screening. Grants that were going to provide significant regional benefits were highly, were highly scored in 2018. And the other thing that they looked at, which it makes a lot of sense, is population size and call volume. They look to put the money where it will affect the most, where it will positively affect the most citizens or the most number of calls. So, larger communities and communities with larger call volumes, at least in 2018, that was one of their funding priorities. The 2019 funding priorities are, are not available yet. I spoke to the FEMA representative today, our, our regional representative, and they're not available at this time. The peer review, it's the other half of the scoring process. So, that is based on these four, these four criteria, if you will. These are the things that the peer reviewers look at when they read your, your narrative that you provide, your, your narrative answers to the questions that the grant application asks. And again, we don't know specifically what the questions will be, but they are expected to center on these areas. First, obviously, what the project description is. What is it that we, as a community, as a fire department, intend to do with this additional staffing that we're asking for funding for? Excuse me. How will that additional, how will those additional firefighters affect our, how will it impact our daily operations? How will those additional firefighters reduce the community risk? And how will they make our operations safer? Financial need, they expect you to discuss budget shortfalls in funding the positions through the normal budgeting process, any other attempts that we, that the community has made to provide funding for these positions, that sort of thing. And then a cost-benefit analysis. They would like to see us quantify anticipated savings or more likely increased efficiencies that would be, that would be gleaned by adding the staffing. So that's what the peer review score would be based on. Those two things obviously combine to your total score in some probably super-secret formula. How much money is available there? In 2018, the Safer Program was funded at 350 million nationwide. They issued approximately seven, excuse me, 374 grants out of that, out of that 350 million dollars. I don't recall, I don't know that I actually saw a reputable number of how many applicants they received, but I did hear the number 8,000 floated around. So, just to give you a, and don't hold me to 8,000, but just to give you a scope of, of who we would be, who we would be competing against for, for these, these funds. How long do we get the money? It's a three-year increase in cost share grant, and we'll get to a little more of that in a minute. And at the end of that three years, the town obviously would be responsible for 100% of the salaries and costs of, associated with those personnel. So this table shows a breakdown of years one through three. Obviously, in the first and second year, the federal government, the Safer Grant picks up 75% of all costs associated with the additional firefighters. The town would be expected to budget 25%. Year three, it switches, it goes to 35 from the grant, 65% through the normal budgeting process. And beyond that, obviously, the 100% of the cost is, is transferred to the town. So how much exactly does that mean? So, if we were to hire four firefighter paramedics, and we use that number because the, the pay rate is slightly higher for firefighter paramedics, so this would be indicative of the highest, the highest case. If we hire some combination of firefighters and, firefighter paramedics, firefighter EMTs, it would be something less than that. And the numbers are right there for you, I won't, I won't read all of them, but there it is in, in actual dollars for you. So the timeline, and it, as I alluded to at the beginning, the, I spoke to the, the regional FEMA rep on the phone today, he was working in California, but he called me back. They, he's not entirely sure what the 2019 timeline looks like. When I spoke to him a couple of months ago, he indicated that he felt the, the Safer Grant application window would be likely to open in the January, February timeframe, because that's what it did in 2018. As most of you know, in 2018, there was the government shutdown in the middle of the year, which threw the award date of the 2018 grants way, way out. As you see on the, on the slide here, they, they anticipate to make awards in July. The last round of awards in 2018, I believe, was made around October timeframe. So that got pushed way out, which I suspect may be impacting what's going on this year, although I, again, I'm not 100% positive on that. So, when I spoke to him today, I said, so what is your, what is your best, best guess as to the application, application process, application window? He said he anticipated the application window would open mid-March of 2020. But again, I will, you know, stay in, in constant communication with him, and we're beginning the process of preparing the, the parts of the process that we can ahead of time. There are worksheets and things of that nature that we can start to fill out that are not official forms that we would submit, but there are worksheets that, by answering those, we prepare ourselves to answer questions that can be anticipated to be on the application process. So we are starting to review those now. But the 2018 timeline would kind of give you a ballpark. Applications in 2018 opened in middle of February, closed, you know, mid to late March, so about a 30-day period, couple of months to do the funding selection, and then they started, they planned to start issuing awards end of July, but I believe the government shutdown fell in there somewhere, and that kind of, kind of set that whole process off. So, we are closely monitoring and keeping in touch with our FEMA representative to get date updates, but that's what we know at this point. Any questions?
Peter, then Finley.
Okay. Thank you, a couple of questions. Have you folks sat down with London Dairy Fire Department, discussed their application and gotten a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay, now.
As well as some other communities that.
Okay, good, good.
That we're familiar with that have been successful.
And a lot of these questions, I'm basing off my personal experience, but I just wanted to hear from you guys. Now, has FEMA posted this? If I wanted to look at it, it's on their website, that I could look it up and see.
So if you go to FEMA.gov, you'll find information on, as I presented here, the 2018 and previous Safer Grants, as well as, the other thing that you'll see on the same, on the same or similar page is the AFG Grant, which is the Assistance of Firefighters Grant. That's more of an equipment-related grant versus this is a staffing, a personnel-related grant.
Okay.
So you can find most of the information that I gave you tonight on the, on the FEMA website. It, it takes a little looking, and some of it's kind of long-winded, but it is there.
Okay. Matt, also, or Chief, who is the grant guy at Merrimack Fire?
At the moment, it's me.
Okay.
We have, we have selected a working group that, some folks that have volunteered that either have grant-writing experience or, you know, related experience that we feel are going to be beneficial, and we're going to work together on it, obviously, with the guidance of the Fire Chief.
Have you ever had any formal grant-writing training?
Uh, we did it, we attended a couple of seminars, or a seminar held at the New Hampshire Fire Academy. We're looking at, there's a, a two-day grant-writing course coming up in Salem towards the end of the month that we're looking at. There's still spots open, and so we are looking at that as well.
I think that's huge, and I think if you're gonna, I had a burden that put on me, I would have appreciated having that training, but, you know, so I think that's something definitely you guys should follow, follow up on.
It is definitely something we're.
And the last thing I'm going to ask you is, I know that when I, we went for a buffer zone protection grant from the federal government, they had folks out there that would come by, they came, actually came to and assisted me from Homeland Security. And I don't know if FEMA's offering somebody to come in and help.
So that's the individual that I, that I mentioned that I spoke to today. He's our kind of FEMA liaison for this region. He helped put on the, the seminar that we went to, and as I said, when I called him today to get some information, he called me back on his cellphone from California. So I have no reason to doubt that we'll get, you know, continued support. Obviously, his, his schedule's going to get fuller as we get closer to the, to the time, but we'll continue to, to reach out to him and get information as we can.
All right, and one, this is for Paul real fast, and I'm sorry. Paul, I'm looking at, the number jumps up in year four, obviously, we take full responsibility. Or Eileen, I'm sorry. To defray that big hit, should we, let's say this be a successful grant, to defray that big hit, can we put money in a capital reserve to build up towards that? Would it make sense to do that?
Go right ahead, Eileen.
No, you can't, you can't put wages into a capital reserve fund.
That's why I asked.
But, you know, that's, that's the good thing about it, though, is because you are, you know, you are inching into it, so you're not like getting 100% in one year. So, you, you can kind of plan for it and know that it's coming, kind of thing, so.
Thank you.
No, I'm all set. The question answered.
The question, the question I had, AC Duke, is when I'm looking at the timeline with the anticipated, just, again, it's a hypothetical. The anticipated award date is the end of July. We're already going to be in the beginning, in the beginning, our fiscal year budget, the beginning of that year. And I know anecdotally, in talking with the chief, it's assuming we get the award for firefighters, you'd have to, going to have to post for those positions, and then you're going to have to interview. Hopefully, you get people that don't need to be trained, you might get somebody that's fresh out of the academy. You, you have no idea, so realistically, realistically, assuming we get the grant, it's not something that we're going to be able to consider funding until probably 2021, 2022? Is that, do I, do I have that timeframe right?
I would say the, the, the funding period, the funding point in the grant, wherever that happens to be, whether it be July or October, there are sometimes indications that you get from the federal government that maybe you're doing well in the process, not always, they're not always reliable. Certainly, we would prepare for, in, in hopes or in planning to have those people start to have the process in place. You're right, there would not be money to, to hire them until whenever the funding is released, sometime late in, in the, in the 2020 calendar year, hopefully in the, the first half of the fiscal year. But there's no guarantee.
When, so I guess, kind of an arcane question, but when the, when the, if, if we win the award, you know, when does the check get issued? Does the check get issued almost immediately, or is there a process that you have to go through in order to figure out how to get the funds from point A to point B?
My understanding is if you've done everything correctly, there are a number of requirements, administrative requirements to, when you, that are required before you can submit the grant. Basically, FEMA wants to make sure that if they give you a grant, you are, we are prepared to accept it. So there are steps that need to be completed, as well as completing the application and sending that in. There are administrative steps that we will have to take to make sure that, if we're successful in the grant, that we're ready to receive the funds as soon as they're ready to be dispersed. I don't know exactly what the timeframe on that is.
Usually, it's two to three months after you've been selected.
Okay.
Because you have to go through the administrative acceptance and.
Yep. And the other thing to bear in mind, too, is that in, at least in 2018, they dispersed grant funds, and I believe in a total of either four or five rounds. So, they, you know, looked at, looked at awards, issued the first round of awards, issued a subsequent round, and those spanned out over, I want to say, like an additional 60 days, 90 days from when they've announced the first round of, of disbursements.
I, I had one, oh, go ahead, Eileen, I have a question, but go ahead, Eileen.
So, what I wanted to say is that because we operate on, on an entire year, and we don't have to, you know, allocate our funds in, in little tiny pieces, that if you were awarded a grant during this fiscal year, you could go out and be doing all of that, all of those things about hiring people. If you were given the work, the go-ahead from the federal government, yes, you had it, that you could actually go and do all of those things, including looking for people, recruiting people, and all those kinds of things, prior to actually getting the cash. So.
Within the, the grant requirements, AC Duke, is there any type of a, I'm just, I'm just going to say it, you, you bring on a firefighter, they, the grant, you know, four firefighters, the grant's for, for three years, after that third year, are they required to stay with the, with the Town of Merrimack for a period of time after that grant expired? Or are they, for the lack of a better term, are they a free agent after the, after that, after that three-year period?
My understanding is there's not an obligation for them to remain. I did not see anything to indicate that there was, at this time.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Nancy.
Usually a grant, wouldn't it? That's a town's criteria.
Right, I, I didn't know if we had, if.
A grant usually doesn't have those. And they also, does it? I'm just seeing some other questions.
One.
Yeah, Chief, on the scoring page, it talks about cost benefits, and it says quantify any anticipated savings or increased efficiencies. What are the criteria that they're asking you to use or look with in terms of quantification of savings or. of savings or, and efficiencies?
They don't indicate, they leave that pretty open-ended in the question. I would speculate that the things that they are looking for are things like reduction in overtime costs, or the ability to staff apparatus with more personnel to operate in a more efficient manner. Obviously, if we, if we, if a community, say, went from three personnel on the engine to four, that increases the efficiency of that piece of apparatus. And that crew, they can do more in less time, that sort of thing. There isn't a, I was a little thrown by that, because in, in our business, there's efficiency in that particular, like, that aspect isn't something that, that we look at in that way typically. I mean, obviously, not, I, I don't know the exact answer to that question, nor do they give away the, the what they're looking for.
It leaves us at some peril, I'll just make that observation.
Perhaps it has something to do with the standards, the standards.
Sure, yeah. I mean, certainly attempting the, that was one thing that was pretty clear in the, in the priorities from the 2018 grant. There was, there's some things that they give a high priority, a medium priority, and if the, either the closer that a community can get to that, that recommended 17-10 standard, or, or hit it and, and hit it a larger percentage of the time, they scored that higher than a community who was not going to hit it, or, you know, was maybe close to it, and they're still just going to be close to it.
A little hint would be to focus on the standards, and the difference between what we are, how far away we are from the standards, and what would those four positions do to get you closer to that standard.
Without a doubt, without a doubt.
That's really what they're probably going to be looking at in terms of their evaluation.
And we certainly also have to just make sure that they don't change those priorities, obviously, in 2019.
But if they put down the standards as one of the objectives, the missions-
Yep.
Then that's probably where their focus is going to be. And to a certain extent, the further away we are from it, the better off we are. Because then we can say, see, we really have to.
Barbara.
Yeah, that, I had a question associated with that, like, are we 17-10 compliant currently?
We're not.
Not, not entirely, no.
So knowing where those deficiencies are-
Yeah.
You know, and concentrating on the ones that we are most deficient in would probably help our case, maybe.
Certainly.
That's right.
So back on the presentation regarding 2018, you, you write that approximately 374 grants were awarded out of roughly about 8,000 people. Do you know of anybody that was awarded a grant that chose not to accept it? Are there any rules in the grant that if, if we get the grant and make a decision that we don't want, I mean, are we, are we bound?
Unintended consequences.
Yeah, unintended consequences for, for applying for a grant, they're not using it.
No, there's nothing in this that says you have to take the grant if, once you're offered the grant, you actually, I think there's a 30-day or 10-day period, I think it's small, I think around 10-day period to accept that grant. And if you don't acknowledge you accept that grant, then it rolls back into the pot.
Okay. So, so when the awards are made, there's no, um, there's no wait, there's no waitlist? They, they pick, they pick the, they pick the applications that they like, the awards are made, and if nobody takes, if nobody wants an award, then-
It rolls back in the pot.
Rolls back into, comes back next year.
If there's money left over, they'll-
Okay.
They'll pick it again, yeah.
Or, or I would say probably it would go into one of those subsequent rounds-
Right.
Of, of awards. If, if someone from, say, the second round of dispersments, for whatever reason, chooses not to accept it, that money would get rolled back-
Into the third round.
And, and somebody who wasn't going to get a grant might get one, someone who was on the, you know, on the verge of not getting it.
Eileen.
That's what's so important about making sure that this is, you've convinced yourself and the community and everyone else that it's absolutely necessary. So when you apply for the grant, you know that you're going to accept it because it's absolutely, positively, indisputably needed. And again, with the fourth year, that won't be a question, because it's already been proven that it's needed, and we won't need to think about whether or not we're going to fund them. I mean, they're good questions, I'm not saying that they're not, but I'm just, I'm just telling you why it's, why my, my interest is so strong with making sure that we have all of those, those factual, that factual information that, that backs it up.
I'm sorry, Peter.
I guess, I know that Merrimack PD went, we went for COPFAST grants, similar. And the odds of getting this grant, as you saw, possibly 8,000 applicants and 370 so odd, some odd departments get it. So I'm glad to see, like, all our departments, that we're looking for alternative ways to fund these, but the odds of this happening are very slim, and I think that's obviously the reality of it, too. So, I mean, we didn't even get close. And we thought, you know, at first, you go in thinking, oh, maybe we got a shot, but, you know, but it was worth a try, you had to do it.
We did get around, we did get around of police officers with one of the federal grants that was 25, 50, 75, and 100%.
That was the school resource officer?
No, no, it wasn't before that. It was for, I think we obtained two officers, but, but it was that way. There was a, you know, gradually you paid more as the years progressed.
Eileen.
So we also were able to get, Assistant Chief Bornman was able to get a very, very good grant a few years ago for SCBA equipment, breathing apparatus equipment, so, and London Dairy got some. And, you know, I mean, there's, we need to, we, we can't all put our, all our eggs in one basket, but we need to, like, fully, completely explore this. I, I know this has nothing to do with you, but it does have to do with the council. There are people in the federal government that represent us. We need to be speaking to them. Gene Sheehan, for instance, is a, in the, that, some committee that might relate to those kinds of things. So, and, and maybe some of, some of the others, but, so, we need to put in all, all, all-out effort, and that includes political discussions.
My, my only comment is the, just the timeline, the process, the timeline, how it fits into our budget boat for this year and for next year. That's really kind of the, I mean, I agree with you, I think we should pursue it, but I'm thinking, in the, in the, in the, in the short term, you know, is, is it, you know, especially, I think Pete makes a good point about, you know, the, you know, it's, it's a very competitive, very competitive process.
Catch 22.
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about how the grant fits into our ability to budget and plan. That's how I'm looking at it right now. It's not that I don't want to apply for it, I'm, which I think, when we have the conversation next week, hopefully, things will come to better light that will grant better, at least will give me some better perspective as to how we should be moving forward. Does anybody else have anything for Chief Courier or AC Duke regarding the grant? Do we need to reschedule them for a date certain? Go right ahead, Eileen.
Um, I just, I am surprised as I could possibly be at how lax this, we've got hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of grants out here, and it, we don't, we're, we have to keep looking at the website to see when the window of opportunity opens, and when it closes, and what they want, and only, you know, I mean, it's just absurd that, you know, there's going to be this little window of opportunity, and if you're not, like, right on it, you, you lose out on it. And how does that, you know, how does that relate to people's ability to plan, not only plan, but also prepare the proper grant material? So it's just, I'm just expressing my frustration as to, it just seems like a really dumb way to run a government.
Finley.
Actually, I should let you say what your plans were at this point before I ask my question, because I-
Ask, I've, I've recognized you, you can ask your question.
I guess, I'm just wondering, it sounded like we were going to move on to our next department, or-
We're going to move on to code enforcement, but I need to figure out whether, you know, what Eileen and Paul, in working with the chief and the assistant chief, in terms of them to pull their data together, what is inappropriate.
But that's, I feel like we're in a catch 22 situation right now.
Well, hearing about their budget is more than just personnel, and that's why, maybe the other part is so small, it doesn't matter, right? I, I just was wondering if it would be better to get that portion and then have a presentation when we have all the other information.
That's what I meant earlier. I mean, we could do the equipment and all that stuff tonight.
Yeah, because it's, there's still a big chunk there, and then just follow up with the personnel, things like, just my thought.
But just to-
Eileen?
We actually had been prepared to do that, right, Chief?
Yeah.
We were going to talk about the budget as well, so, you know, whatever your pleasure is.
So we're not going to talk personnel, we're just, we're going to talk infrastructure and technology?
Whole thing except for personnel.
Whole thing except personnel, okay.
Can I just?
Nancy, I apologize.
That's all right. Maybe not to be discussed now, but before we finish, and finish with the fire, we do have to talk about the catch 22 we're in.
What, I'm sorry, you just-
We're in a catch 22 situation. Meaning that if we consider putting in four, basically that negates the grant.
Correct.
Entirely. If we don't do it, then we're taking the chance. If we are considering the four, then there has to be data more than that, and we can discuss that later. But, you know, what is the, to me, it makes sense with all of the changes that have occurred in this town, and even the projection of what's going to happen, that there's been an increased need. I need to be able to see data that that's happened. That's the data we need to see.
And this is why I don't want to go any further.
Yeah.
To me, I'm comfortable with, let everybody step back, gather themselves, get the information that everybody needs, clear up any miscommunications, and let's present them.
But that's the data I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know, that's why-
In total, what's the kind of data I would need to consider when you come back? That's one piece of data over there, is that the calls. But from three years ago, I think, and what I had need to do is I have to see it, that there's been somehow a proportional increase in calls.
Correct.
Now, the configuration might be different, ALS versus fire versus BLS, that kind of thing. But is there an increase in number of calls? If there isn't, what does that tell us, versus there is? That's the kind of data we're going to need in the future.
And the nature of the call.
But the public needs to know that, too, is that that's the kind of data that we need, and emotionally, yes, we want to, but we want to be able to justify it to the public, too. So that's all I, to say about that.
So I'm going to put it before the council again. I frankly don't want to go any further with this discussion and let everybody take a few, take a week or two to gather themselves and come back.
Finley?
Whatever everybody wants, I'm good with I do.
Barbara.
Are you talking about even the equipment you don't want to do?
I don't want to touch anything.
Oh, literally, the entire package? I don't care.
I don't see a problem doing it, but I don't get that.
I don't care.
Juan?
Keep the mindset together.
I agree with Pete Albert.
So are we.
We're at a point where-
We wanted to keep it together.
This is important. Entire package.
Okay. So my, my comment was even more important before we ended.
The catch 22, the catch 2020 is very important, Nancy, I agree with you.
It is. Because if, in fact, we decide to budget it, then the grant, they're not going to give us the grant, because they're going to say, by the way, you could afford it, so why are you even asking for a grant?
Or maybe.
And you can't do it in lieu of, those grants you do in place of, you can't do that.
But maybe we can only afford two positions versus the entire four.
But that doesn't help the staffing, because you need four, one free shift.
We can't really have that discussion at a public meeting about-
We still need that data.
That kind of thing. You will have all the information, I will have all kinds of different methods that we can think of. I'll work with the chief and his staff to try and not only get that data, but to think of creative ways in which we can have money in the budget that might not be, I, I don't want to say too much.
So, so Eileen-
You see what I mean? I want to be able to have, I, I want to be able to put these things together so that we can cover our bases.
Eileen, would you be prepared to go on the 15th or the 22nd?
22nd.
22nd.
Chief Courier? Okay. So, Paul?
Pause, I think it's 22nd.
22nd, it's packed, it's all DPO.
Maybe we need to do a snow date, date.
Paul, do you have the, I don't have the calendar here in front of me.
Yeah, the 22nd's packed, that's all a DPW, and the, the next date would be the 29th.
And that's when we're supposed to be wrapping up a budget?
But you can, you have the other date, the 30th, to wrap up the budget the next day, or you can start right after the presentation. So it's-
Can't we do it in between the, the, what are the two dates that you just mentioned?
Well, we got the 29th, the 30th, that are open right now.
No, no, no. I'm talking in between the next meeting, which is the 8th, you said?
Today's the 8th.
All right. When's the next one?
The 15th.
The 15th. When's the next one?
The next one's the 22nd, so we do have-
So somewhere in between the 15th and the 22nd, we can do, we can do a presentation.
Can I have a novel idea? Can we put it on the agenda for the 23rd, full town council meeting?
Depends on what's on there, so, make room.
You can win it at that.
Yes.
You can, sometimes. Sometimes it's critical substance, but I will do what you wish.
The 23rd? Put it on the regular council meeting for the 23rd? Finley?
I will.
Okay. Nancy? Juan? Okay, so we're going to postpone the fire department portion of the budget to the regularly-scheduled town council meeting for Thursday, the 23rd? And actually, why don't we make that, put that upfront on the agenda and call it an appointment? Don't make it an old business and new business, let's just call it an appointment, so that it's-
First.
It's first. I gather you don't like that, Eileen.
No, I, I, I'm not real good on these, you know, as far as agendas and that kind of thing go, but I would think that it's a workshop, so it should probably be a workshop, and then you go into the, then you go into a council meeting, because they're two, they're kind of two different things. I, I don't care, Mr. Parliamentarian over here might, might know, I, I, I don't.
No, you're 100% right. We're in workshops right now, so, yes, you are.
Meeting with 8.
But we could start at 6:30-
Okay.
-to do it, and then the meeting, the public, the, the regular council meeting can start immediately after. We wrapped up at seven, 7 o'clock, if it goes longer than 6:30.
Consensus? Peter?
The only other thing I'd ask is, any audiovisual aids and presentations, and you've got some great graphs and stuff here, can we get it all on PowerPoint so that people at home can see everything we present? Get it all out there so that if we're going to refer to it, look at it, and talk about it?
You, you can't get that on PowerPoint, I can tell you that. But I can tell you, though, that we have, we have a, a presentation similar to this one-
Okay.
-that we already looked at, but the information that we were looking at was not indicative of what we were looking for. So it will be absolutely in a PowerPoint for the public to see.
I just, when we talk about it, we talk about charts, and people at home can't see anything.
Oh, no, 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 no. We'll definitely have it, I'm just-
So the town council's going to have a workshop on Thursday, January 23rd, at 6:30 P., 6:30 PM, to discuss the fire department's budget. Is that accommodable? Okay. Okay? Then-
The town council meeting to finish.
So that being said, moving on to tab number 06.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Paging, thank you, AC Duke.
Oh, you're still at the code enforcement, that's right.
Code enforcement. Page forty-seven.
I was, I was saying goodnight to you too. I tried to help you, but it just, you worked faster.
You can go ahead, Chief.
Okay, uh, oh, good evening again, I'm Fire Chief of my career, this is Chief Matt Duke. We're going to review the code enforcement, which is basically the building department and the health department. The budget itself is pretty straightforward with very little changes. The largest change that we had in this budget is if you go under eighty-one oh seven, part-time wages, we're projecting to move the part-time health official to full-time. And at the end of the section there under eighty-one thirty-six, where it says unemployment compensation, you can see where it says the health officer full-time net increase. So, with the money that's currently in the budget and the increase of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars would bring that, uh, health officer from a part-time to a full-time position. And some of the things that I want to bring up that's very important to understand is that health officers are, again, like firefighters, police officers, they're, they have a great need in, in the community. They're there to protect people and protect their health and welfare. And, uh, health officers are the type of people that have specific training and education, and they usually stay in their positions for a long period of time. It's hard to find a part-time health officer that's going to stay with, for the last three that we've had, they've been younger people that have gone through college for the, for that being their career, and got the experience here, and, and have moved on. So, what we'd like to do is move that to a full-time position. And one of the things we have to run, understand, just in Merrimack alone, it's highlighted in the documentation that was sent out, we have a hundred and thirty food establishments that need to be inspected at least at a minimum twice a year. That's not including any other complaints, garbage complaints, restaurant complaints that happen weekly currently. And out of those a hundred and thirty, uh, many of those businesses are what we call frequent flyers, okay, to where we have to end up going in not two times, but sometimes four to six times a year to ensure that they maintain their health standards.
Could we have a list, please?
Pardon? Actually, it's in your, it's in my monthly report, if you look at that, it's all there. And it's published on the website.
That'll make us read that report.
And it is published on the website, fire department website, and their, uh, building and health. So, uh, I, I think this is very important, and for the difference in the dollar value, I think the value that town's going to get out of this is going to be tremendous.
I support it. I, I think it's, it's desperately needed in this community, hands down. You know, we, we talked about, you know, residences that are, that are being built. It's only going to be a matter of time that additional food establishments are going to begin to take a look at Merrimack as a place to, for people to do something different. You know, we have, we have the Dunkin' Donuts and a, I forget the nationality that, that's adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts on, on Continental Boulevard. It's Thai food? Okay, I did not know that, that's cool. Thai, we have, we have another Mexican restaurant that just opened up on, on, uh, at the old, at the old DeAngelo, so, I think, you know, these things are good, that people that are looking to start a business and, you know, provide a food establishment, you know, we need to be in a position to be able to respond to them so that, you know, they're maintaining public safety and being able to, you know, provide a service to the, to the general public, so I, I do support it.
But it's just to maintain that level of quality and cleanliness, which is important.
The, the one, the one question, it, it's, it's a curiosity thing, do, does the town have any obligation to expect the, the medical facilities, like the convenient MD or the urgent care facility that's, the, it's just, just kind of a curiosity thing concerning the level of, of care that they provide, which is a little bit different, I was wondering if.
It's not under the food code, because they don't serve food there, so there's no requirement for the fire department or the health department to inspect a medical facility?
Interesting.
They have their own standards from the state, the state will do that inspection?
Okay, so the state, okay, I didn't know that, that's why I was asking the question. National, okay. That's, that was my two cents, I, I support the, the position. And my colleagues have any questions? Pete?
Chief, other than currently our, what our health inspector's doing and the part-time, uh, health inspectors doing, the restaurants, food service, are there any other, can you let me, give me an approximate number?
Schools, daycares, all the schools, all daycares, any type of assisted living they have to inspect.
Yep.
Any type of, uh, pools, public pools, public beach areas. They also have to do foster homes for foster kids, all that has to be health inspected.
Yep.
All that prior to the people even getting their permission to have a foster child or something in that line.
And you, and you know what, in that in itself, with the, the growth we keep talking about, and the responsibilities of the individual, and the importance of their job, I, I agree a hundred percent, this is important to have.
And it's not private pools, it's just, it's public pools. But we do have some residential pools that they give lessons as a business through community development approval, so now they become public pools, so now we have to inspect those.
The foster care piece, I remember because you had to come out to, and I went from one smoke detector to three, to, to three high-tech smoke, you know, smoke CO2 alarms in my house before I could, my wife and I could, could foster our daughters, so I'm very familiar with you folks there.
We don't have that health inspector, so.
It was huge.
Yeah, it's huge, but the issue is, is the building official and myself go out and do the best we can with the food safe training that we've had, because we have to meet those minimum requirements. And, uh, it's, it's, you see this shock on somebody's face when I walk in and show my health inspector, deputy health officer, and, and they think I'm a firefighter.
Eileen? No? You had your hand raised, I didn't want you to think I ignored you. You forgot? Okay, fair enough. Anybody else? Okay. Again, Chief Courier, AC Duke, thank you so much for your time, appreciate it, and we'll see you on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
So, the next tab is going to be zero-one, under general government, it's going to be page ten in your book. Eileen?
General government, for the most part, that is, that includes, um, the council, includes myself and the finance department. It also includes, um, the clerks in the finance department and payroll and all those people who am I missing? Oh, technology as well. So, that's basically what general government covers. So, um, you don't see really any increases here. The big one every year is, and it varies by huge enormous amounts, is what's called compensated absences. Now, compensated absences, I've tried to convince Paul that that doesn't need to be as high for various reasons, because we've had, you know, retirements and, um, and not everybody's going to retire, and can't we do an average of that, and can't we do, you know, all, all kinds of different kinds of things like that? But it's actually an accounting entry. So, you don't have any choice but to take that money and to put it into a separate account to prepare for it. So, um, I've asked Paul to recalculate it and work, work with it a little bit. I think we can move it somewhat. Again, I'm looking at this whole thing with an eye toward coming up with either cuts or extra money for other things that you may want to do. And that may be an area, a small area where we, we might be able to make some adjustments as, as the year, you know, as time progresses. So, um, so anyway, um, that's kind of, that's pretty much it. I don't think there's really anything that's, at least to me, that stands out, that's being requested. You see, as has been requested, um, the increase for a more experienced technology person or more technical technology person that you heard about at the last council meeting is reflected in here, is that right? It's not reflected in here?
That was my question.
So, um, yeah, so, any questions that you, you might have, I'd be happy to answer.
Nancy, then Peter.
Okay, my question has to do with item eight-two-seven-zero on page fourteen, which is the NHMA. From eighteen nineteen, it was thirteen hundred dollars, then last year it was eighteen thousand. Now, is, this is not, or is it, that we just reestablished with them?
Uh, yes, so, we weren't, we weren't using them at all.
Correct.
So, the thirteen hundred dollars that you saw from, from years before was probably, we were, we were paying for courses. So, we didn't belong to New Hampshire Municipal Association of particular ones.
This is the group that we said, yeah, let's do it, but let's monitor.
Let's do it for a year, they'll give us a reduced rate for that particular year, which was this current year. And then we will, um, we will assess it and see whether or not we want to pay the twenty-eight thousand, which is the full boat price.
Right, and part of that deal was all the different departments and all the different commissions or committees was going, were going to monitor, keep tabs on how they utilized it so that we could make a determination of whether we wanted to do it or not. Do we have that?
Yes.
And?
So, I went out several times to departments and said, hey, what are you guys doing? You know, this could go away. And community development is utilizing it. Their boards and commissions are utilizing the training. They get very, for, for a lot of different reasons, excuse me, training that NHMA use, uh, provides for their boards and commissions. It's, uh, it's very good, it's reasonably priced, and they get to go to these training sessions and get trained on new, new laws, new RSAs. Community development definitely using it. Library has started to look into using it as well. They didn't, uh, but they're starting to use some of the programs that they get. There's a lot of good programs, um, for finance that we are, we are looking into, starting to look at. We got away from it a little bit in finance, because Tom and myself have been with a lot of different organizations and we get the training, but some of the better stuff, Tom goes to with the trustee of trust funds. They utilize that for budget purposes, and the trustees training for the trustee of trust funds, what they can do, what they can't do, the new laws, so they're utilizing it. Tom's going with them to, to, on, on the training, treasurer's training, very popular. General government, there, there's offerings for the staff, the IT staff, the, uh, the human resource staff, the.
Are they using it?
They're not utilizing it as yet. We really, it's been only since July. Six months that we've been on, yeah, but six months.
No, we.
It's last year's budget. It's last year's budget. We started July first with them. July first, two thousand. This year, two thousand nineteen. So, yeah, it's been six months, but the trainings don't come along every month with certain things. There's certain times of years where they bring some of this stuff forward and you utilize it. So, there is training out there that they're looking at utilizing, and we have utilized it in the community development, trustee of trust funds, and, and it's part of finance.
Eileen, then Peter.
I just wanted to say that I have said to the department heads, you know, you for some years now, two or three years now, where we haven't used New Hampshire Municipal Association, you have sought out other opportunities to go and get various kinds of training. And I'm telling you now that if you are not interested in NHMA, which I, I am not like fully seeing one hundred percent, um, then, then you're going to lose it. So, they're giving, they've been given a kind of an opportunity to go and see what's available to them that, because there's a lot, there's an enormous amount. It might even be a good idea for somebody from NHMA to come in and meet with the department heads at a department head meeting and say, hey, listen, these are the programs that we've got. Yeah.
And I, I forgot to mention DPW and assessing are using it.
Peter, and then Barbara.
Okay, just two things. One, I'd like to, I know, I'd like to know exactly how many people took courses. I imagine each department must track their training so that they can show they trained that. So, I'd like to know actually who did what training. That's just on that. On, on the whole general government budget, Eileen, the salaries we're reading, does this include your proposed raises for non-union employees?
It does not.
Okay, so we haven't even seen that yet, seen how it's factored into the budget? Okay, so, and when that comes up, we'll discuss that then, okay, great.
Barbara?
Okay, so back to the courses again, so if someone is taking a course, do they also have to pay for the course? Is it free?
No, it's not free, um, most of the time it is at a reduced rate, so.
What does reduced rate mean, any idea?
Uh, no, but I'll, I'll get, I should have all that, so I'm, I'm sorry, I was. Preoccupied.
No problem.
So, what, um, what I will tell you though is that we cannot forget the part of what they do for municipalities, for things that we collectively need them to do for, um, you know, in terms of interacting with, with the legislature. Lobby, lobbying and that kind of thing. They are, you know, they are very helpful in a lot of things. Unfortunately for us, we've had very unique Merrimack things for the past seven or eight years that haven't related, you know, been necessarily a big statewide thing. So, we've kind of been on, on our own for those, but, um, they do get involved in a lot of, a lot of things. So, they're, you know, like for instance, if you think about how they're talking about, about kind of slowing down this whole business of dealing, you know, stepping ahead of the ball with regard to surface water standards for PFAS and those kinds of things. They're like, they're saying, slow, slow down, because you haven't even gotten your you-know-what together for drinking water yet, so let's not go attacking our wastewater treatment plant, for instance. So, you know, those, those kinds of things, I just, I'm not, I'm not being an, uh, NHMA zealot, I'm just saying that, um, I think they offer a lot of things, I think the, necessarily, keeping in mind, again, DPW is a big department with many different things. I, I, we will provide you with who took the courses and all that kind of stuff for you.
And the cost of the course as well.
Absolutely.
Because.
Versus what it would cost, because some of the things you actually couldn't even take, if you didn't belong.
We need to know, the cost benefit analysis of what would the courses have been if we weren't members within this.
Right, or if they would have given them to us at all.
At all, right. Unless they're a membership, right.
Actually, NHMA has, has turned a blind, not a blind eye, but they have turned away Merrimack when we weren't resident, when we weren't part of their association for courses, even though we were willing to pay the extra fee, they turned us away.
Is that a general statement, or was it because they were annoyed with us?
I, I don't know, but several times we've tried, we applied for classes, and we sent them checks, and we got the checks back saying, you're not, nope, can't attend.
I'd like to find out what that is.
Yeah, but there's one other thing that we, we didn't mention.
It'd be cheaper just to be able to pay for all those courses and not be a member.
Correct.
And maybe they have a policy that if you're not a member, you can't attend.
But I'm sure.
We'll try to find that out for you. But the one thing, they're bringing back their wage study.
They're bringing back what, I'm sorry?
Their wage study.
Which we used to use all the time.
Right, and they, they, they went away from it, now they're bringing it back, and as a, as a member, you are entitled to that information.
And we used to get that, that, then that went away.
And that went away, so they are, that's what Sharon just texted me to tell, to remind me of that, yes.
Hi Sharon. Go get live Sharon.
Barbara, my understanding, non-members would pay fifty, members would pay thirty-five, it's something, something along those particular lines.
Not, I'm not saying with NHMA, specific, but other things that I have attended, that's the way that, that they've usually, they've done that. The, um, the concern that I have is that NHMA is the lead plaintiff on the PFOA, uh, the PFOA, um, limits, where, where DES reduced it down to the lower MCLs, and they, they were able to get an injunction that put the...
Well, they're on that side.
They're on that, they're on that side of the issue, that's correct. So, for me, for me, philosophically, I have a hard time, where this community's made a commitment to bonding through another agency, to provide clean water to this community, us funding a philosophy that is the exact opposite of what we've taken, taken steps for. And that's, that, that's one particular thing that I would point at. The other thing is, uh, a month ago, we had a member of the ZBA that was here that talked about attending a course for the NHMA, and he took a course on cybersecurity. And I'm sitting there like, going, how does cybersecurity relate to serving on the ZBA? If he was on the Information Technology Committee, I, I'm not gonna complain about it. But when you get somebody on the ZBA that's not taking a, a course, it's related to how they're going to be able to do their job as a volunteer member of a board, I, I, I kind of chafe at that. Eileen.
He attended the, he attended the NHMA conference, so, it's, it's a day-long, three-day-long conference or something like that. You go to the conference and you choose whatever kinds of things.
Then that's different, that, that's different.
It's different, yeah.
I agree, that's different. I, I function on the premise that it was a specific...
No.
Okay, I apologize.
No.
Are they involved in the stormwater issue?
But, um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you know why? Because we, down in southern New Hampshire, are the ones that are getting hit by that, not, not the whole state, as usual. So, um, but what I would like to say about NHMA, as far as I know, I mean, I, pardon me if I get this wrong, but I do not believe NHMA is lead plaintiff on that other, on that PFOA thing. They may have written an amicus brief, um, to...
Lead plaintiff with them, Plymouth Village Water District, Dow Chemical, and a third, a fourth person who lives in Center Harbor.
No, 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 it is not, no, it isn't. It's, it's, um, it's the Plymouth Village, uh, Water District is the, the lead plaintiff. You have RMI, you have some dude, and you have some other guy. And maybe NHMA wrote in, in, as I said, in amicus brief, um, meaning they're definitely not a plaintiff unless there's a new lawsuit that I'm not aware of, I can tell you for sure, because I have read it. Um, and wouldn't say that it wasn't if it wasn't, because it isn't.
I've been functioning that they are a part of the lawsuit.
But, they're not, so, anyway.
I know they took a position, that I do know.
And that's different.
That's different, but I, I've been functioning that they were a part of the lawsuit.
No, but I will tell you, though, that, um, it is, I guess I would say to you, is the position that they have to do a cost benefit analysis, a bad position. You know, I mean, they haven't said that the numbers are bad, they're just saying that the numbers need to be carefully reviewed, because...
That's correct.
Um, and, and I, I guess what I would say is what's wrong with that? Because, a, as I have said to Clark before, if you had left it at thirty-eight, um, you wouldn't have had a lawsuit. But, you had to be the lowest of the lowest of the low, and for that reason, it affects every community in the state by tens of millions of dollars. So, is that, you know, you just have to prove that you went through the...
And there is criteria about, you're supposed to do a cost benefit.
That's right, so, what's wrong with, what's wrong with doing that? There's nothing wrong with doing it. Um, and if the cost benefit analysis comes out that that's the case, then, then, there, there it is. You know, I mean, there's nothing wrong with taking a look at things, um, and evaluating, you know? So, that's just my opinion.
I did have one. Going back to page twelve, under eighty-one oh-four, under wages, is, is, is that amount for the technology assistant, the amount that we agreed upon for reclassifying that as assistant technology coordinator?
No.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Correct, okay. It's really all I had. Does anybody else, I'm sorry, Barbara.
Yeah, um, for eighty-three fifty-three, computer services and supplies, there was an increase of twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand. What's included in that category?
The ransomware.
Is that the ransomware?
Anti-ransomware, sorry.
Ransom.
Anti-ransom.
It wasn't.
So, Barbara, if you, um, if you look over there, and, yeah, ransomware.
Yeah, I know, I, I saw it on one of the other pages as well.
Okay.
That's what that is.
But it...
Twenty-three thousand.
Yep, and what did you do last year for ransomware?
It's brand new, right?
We, we had no ransomware?
We are currently doing it now. Um, we've been doing it for four or five months now, and we've been absorbing it in our budget, um, through other areas.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions for either Eileen or Paul? Okay, moving on, we go to revenues. Revenues is on, on the agenda. Paul, did you want to talk about revenues? I'm assuming it's you, Paul, I apologize.
Can I, can I just say, so, um, just for reference, the, the revenues used to be up at the front, now they're in the back.
They're in the back.
So, um, if you look at tab, the, the tab is actually after police, police outside details is, is revenues. Um, and it's given to you in a couple of different ways. Um, it's given to you in excruciating detail, um, and where you see forty dollars and, you know, two dollars here and there. Um, and then it's given to you in a manner in which, um, it kind of consolidates it, so it's, it's more understandable. During the, during the budget process, we kind of went over some of those increases in the revenue. We, um, you can see, if you look on page one-thirty-six, do you mind if I do this, Paul? Okay, um, is, you can see auto registrations, again, creeping up. Um, we've added, uh, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to that in our estimations, because it continues to go up. Now, um, right now, I think, uh, we are looking at hitting this number, but not going much beyond. So, we're getting to the point where there's not gonna be a lot of wiggle room in, in this number. We're very confident in it, but I'm just saying that it is a, it's a tight number. So, um, then we look at some of the other, um, things that we see for, um, increases. We've increased, um, ambulance revenue by, uh, by twenty-five thousand dollars, um, because we see our ambulance revenues go, going up. Again, that's a, that's a component in the, um, with the increased, um, amount and complexity of the calls, we're receiving more money in. So, there's a revenue side to the wages as well, on, um, as far as the, the firefighters are concerned, and that is, is, um, going up. Interest in, um, in pooled cash, obviously, has, has gone up for, from forty-five thousand dollars in, in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and, um, we're looking at, um, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars this year, which is, um, an increase of nothing, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, but anyway, so, um, the other one is transfers to capital reserve fund, um, is this two? Transfer to capital reserve funds?
No, transfer from, that's, um, revenue we get from purchases.
Okay, transfer from capital reserve fund, so these are, this, this one is kind of, uh, you know, when you look at all revenues, it's kind of one of those things that, um, is a misnomer, if you look at all revenues and add them all together, and you say, oh, my God, we look, look at all these revenues. Well, there's a, an expenditure exactly of the same amount on the other side.
You have to do with the capital reserve and expenditure.
This particular one.
You have to transfer it first.
Yeah.
If we expended.
That's right. So, um, so anyway, so, we've, um, what else did we do, Paul?
The only other one is the SRO grant one away, twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, we've done our best to continually, um, adjust upward. Uh, I, I always try and be conservative and, you know, Paul kind of slaps my hand and says, stop it, you know? We're accumulating too much money in fund balance, but, um, so, this year, we were, you know, we, we went up. And, these are, are, um, good, solid numbers, but there's not a lot of movement in them, in terms of up, so. I think that's all, I, does anybody have any questions about revenues?
I just have a quick question, in terms of the transfer of capital reserve fund. So, is it accurate for me to say, I know that when we talk about the total budget, and we try to break it down so that the public can understand, is it correct if I say, two million four-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars is going to be reflected in the budget, but it's not going to affect the tax, affect the tax rate, because that's only expending what we've already saved for?
Correct, that's right.
Okay, so, that's one of those things that, are you impressed, Mr. Albert? You're looking at it like, what did she just say? That's one of those comments that we need to be made during the budget time.
You know what I think, you know what is a really good thing, page to look at? If you look at page three, and, um, I, I should have probably brought it so that I could put it up on the screen, but, um, this, this actually breaks down the revenues between those things that are actually affected by other, you know, self-supporting funds. So, do you have page three? It's the summary of appropriations and all that kind, what?
I'll put it up.
Yeah, put it up. Put her up.
Page three?
Page three.
Yes, because I always found
Oh, in the overview.
That when we do the deliberative session, it really is important to stress those things. Like, let's say the budget's thirty-five million, well, two million of that is not something we have to charge taxes on. It's something we already have money saved up for. And that makes a difference in terms of understanding.
It does.
Yeah, and so, um, sometimes I just, I like to take out all these, these other things and just put in the tax rate related, related things, so that, that
Exactly.
Even though those other things are, are clearly important and need to be scrutinized, um, you still, it, it gives you a better sense of what, the things that are actually affecting the tax rate. So, um, in terms of revenues, um, there are an awful lot of revenues, but, um, only, um, well, not only, but eleven million dollars comes into the general fund from non-taxes. So, other sources, like, we looked at, the biggest one clearly is, um, motor vehicle registrations at five-point-six million dollars. That's, that's, you know, almost half of it, or just about half. So, you know, in, income from departments, building permits, um, and those kinds of things. So, um, that's really the number that we need to, that you need to focus on. So, we are, we're actually showing, um, an increase, uh, increase? We're showing a increase, yes, we're showing an increase in, um, what we're projecting for revenues of a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. So, we beefed up our revenue projections from this current year into next year, added a hundred-and-fifty-seven, fifty-three thousand dollars total to it that affect the tax rate, reduce the tax rate, I should say.
Barbara.
So, when we get money from the state, as in when the governor came to Maramack and gave us a big check.
Big check.
How does that get counted in, into the overall budget? Is it, do we, do we project that, that we're gonna get a certain amount, or does it just get added?
You mean twenty percent of that big check?
I mean, yeah, get...
Where do we put it?
Where, do we, do we get, guesstimate what the amount is and add it to the revenue, or do we just do that when it actually comes to fruition?
So, if a surprise comes at the end of the year, when the budget has already been set, and, and in this particular instance, the governor came, he gave us the check, um, which the town's was a small amount. Um, what happened in that case was, because the tax rate had not been set, the DRA changed our revenue number, which automatically reduced the tax rate. So, that's what happened with that particular thing. But as far as general revenue, um, the, and I know you know this, but for, for simplicity for maybe people watching, is you have an appropriations budget, you have this revenues from other sources, which I mentioned to you are about eleven million dollars that you get from other sources, that you don't have to go to the taxpayers from, for, so you take that, you, you take the appropriations, subtract out these other revenues, and then there's a couple of other calculations, including veterans exemptions and things like that, overlay, which is abatements, that get added in. And that's what you go, that's the net, they refer to as the net amount to be raised by taxes. And that's why the revenue numbers are so important, because they, they reduce the amount that you need to go to the taxpayers for.
It's all done now, she's...
Do you care, do you, do you care if it's up there or not? No, you guys care?
I've got page three in front of me. We all do, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Where are those billboards?
This is twenty twenty.
Yes, yes, the one next to the post office.
Did we approve their budget?
I think it's just, I think it's just Paul.
Yes, so, um, an adjunct, I guess is the word, maybe, um, to the, what you were asking about the, the check for the governor, was a two-year, um, it was a two-year appropriation, because they have a buy, you know, buy-in your budget. So, um, we got, what was it, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars, we got in, it went, automatically went to reduce the tax rate the last time. It's now in here.
It is.
Um, as, I don't know if you can actually see it on a tick of the page. You should've missed it.
Right here, right, it's actually in this one right here, state revenues, uh, where is it, right there, it's a net number right there. So, it's in, uh, meals and room rental tax.
Okay. So, if you look at page one-hundred-and-thirty-six, um, you can see it online, um, what is it called, line, this one? It's under rooms and meals, so, three-three-five-one, that basically, that's, uh, rooms and meals rental taxes. You see that the actual in eighteen nineteen was one-three-oh-eight, one-eleven. Then, the budget, um, went up by that two-hundred and whatever thousand dollars for both years.
Okay. Any questions? Regarding revenues? So, we meet as a council tomorrow night, and then our next budget meeting is gonna be Wednesday, January fifteenth, at six-thirty PM right here.
January fifteenth at six-thirty PM, right here, in the Matthew Thornton Meeting Room. Correct. Is there any comments or questions from the council? All entertainment motion to adjourn?
Same.
Second.
Moved by Council Harrington, seconded by Council Healy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposition, abstention, six, zero, zero, be overturned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.